I think we're about ready to begin if everybody's okay with that. I'm.
I was wondering what that Ginny's screen.
I don't know. I don't know what that was. I have no idea.
Oh, so is trustee education. Are you going to tell us about the boiler? Is that the?
That was our trustee education.
We'll call the meeting to order and then you go ahead and tell us.
Then I go ahead.
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, we're waiting for another doohickey with the boiler. But Mason and Grant have been great about coming in and checking and I think really, really helping and worrying and making sure that the building isn't, you know, we're not in danger of our pipes freezing or something like that. So I really appreciate their willingness to come every few hours. The boiler until it goes to temperature. The second part will only take a couple of minutes to install and it's supposed to arrive tomorrow. So.
Good.
This doesn't sound like a big deal. I mean, I mean, it's a big deal because I was just there and everybody's freezing. And they're busy. There's a lot going on there, but everybody's shivering.
Jill had the hat and.
I know. I know. Um, anyway, so, um, but it's not a huge, it's not a boiler. It's not a big thing that we have to think about. My God, how are we going to cover that? Okay.
Okay. All right. Well, why don't we begin the meeting then? First thing item on the agenda is actually trustee education. So if the boiler, an explanation to the boiler thing is not there, maybe you have something else in mind. Go ahead.
Board governance about board governance, either coming up with topics or doing trustee education. So we're not in the swing of it yet. But if you have ideas or things that you want to do for our five or 10 minute trustee education, then tell Ginny. I mean, you could tell me, but.
Yeah. And also I think with somebody new coming on, um, maybe I could pick her brain a little bit and it might be something that we, you know, we could use a refresher on something like that. But yeah.
Lisa, is there some, excuse me, some rule that we have to do some of this? Is there some, not rules, state mandate, state that libraries have, you know, that we're supposed to be doing in service?
There is a requirement for trustee education, but us.
I mean, who's checking?
Well, um, I, I have to fill it out on the annual report to the state.
Okay, so you have to say something.
This meeting, like if I spent 15 minutes talking about open meeting law, wouldn't, would not count for trustee education. It only counts if somebody from Finger Lakes comes and presents.
Oh.
Yeah, it has to be like an official presenter, not me. So.
In-house. No, it's not the case then.
No.
Okay.
So, uh, so I, you know, Finger Lakes will be offering more webinars. I'll try to share library trustee stuff that comes up that would count. But I'm trying to remember what the, um, I don't remember what the hours were originally. It was a lot of time and I think it got cut in half when it finally passed. So I, I'll double check what the actual requirement is, but I do remember, I think there's a, us, a meeting, a director's meeting tomorrow afternoon, and I'm sure Sarah is going to be talking about this.
Right.
But, um, I will.
Okay.
I just remembered that somewhere we were, was mentioned that we had to do.
Right.
Yeah, some training.
Okay. Well, all right then. Next on the agenda is the consent agenda. Consisting of the minutes, the director's report and committee report.
Can I just ask one question because? May I ask one question?
Sure.
Okay. I wasn't able to be at the November meeting. Lisa, why were the claims and statements tabled?
Because nobody.
And I should have asked that yesterday.
No, it's fine. There was nobody from finance at the meeting.
Okay.
And board felt like.
Yeah.
Somebody from finance should be there.
Okay, that's good. Just so I had a, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay.
All right.
Any other comments regarding the items on the consent agenda? Motion then to accept?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, a second.
I'll second.
Meg, Meg got in there sooner.
Okay.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, carried. All right, the action items. Uh, there's November and December 2020 board statements.
Right.
Is it, is it technically October and November? Did I mix up my dates?
You did.
Ellen?
I was gonna say that.
Okay.
It's end up was because.
It's October and November.
Yes, October and November.
And I did notice that, but forgot it.
Okay, so we'll correct the agenda, but, but it's October and November.
And I represent finance and Jim was there too.
Okay.
Is there any questions? Can, I'm not looking back at, at October, but are there any questions concerning the statements for November? That anyone has or wants to ask about?
Okay.
All right.
Hearing none. Um, I guess we'll have to do these.
I think.
Both October and November in the same motion. So Ellen, you want to make that motion?
I will make that motion. Are we allowed to do both, Lisa, at the same time? Okay, then I will make that motion that we accept the statements for October, November 2020 and the claims for October and November 2020.
You're gonna do all of them at once, okay?
And if it's Joe, I'll second it.
Okay, thanks, Joe.
Thank you.
Any further discussion then?
I wanted to add one thing that came up at finance about the November statements. There was some question because we received the check for $397,000. That's the state grant money for the children's room that we tried to, um, we need to set it up, um, in a new account at Generations and there's been a little bit of a lag. So it looked, it looks, it might look funny, but it'll be okay on the next statement. Did I get that right, Ellen?
Yes.
Okay.
It's a matter of paper.
Yeah.
Numbers from one to another. We have that money already and we have to consider it income.
Right.
Right. But we are putting that money in a special account where we can monitor it.
Right. Right, because they're designated funds.
It, it isn't funds that we're using for anything other than.
Capital.
Designated.
Right.
Children's room, okay? I don't know anything else at finance. If either anybody else has something to say, I think we're all set. We did discuss again, as you saw in the minutes, that looking at budgets in, in the future, starting in January, that are more than one year. And trying to figure out ways to manage our deficit, not use the done money. Okay? Thank you.
Yeah. Yeah, I think with regard to that, uh, you know, delay and, and moving the funds, it might be good for the minutes just to reflect that conversation.
Okay.
Okay.
I, I think that, you know, that's important because it can become a bit confusing. And it'll get straightened out certainly, but best to have it in the minutes as well. So we all recognize why. Okay. All right. Any other discussion on, uh, the statements or claims that are in the motion? Okay, hearing none then. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed and carried. Okay, um, the next on the, on the agenda is the resolution to move board designated funds. So, um,
I, maybe we might need Joe to speak to this because I think at finance, we decided that we don't need to designate, Joe?
Uh, correct. What, uh, in our finance meeting, we, Molly Lalanne was on who, uh, who works at the hospital in the accounting world. And what we've decided to do at this point in time is, is not, is, we have the done money that's sitting there. And we have all realized that we are tapping into it at various times to do a project. We are, we are, for example, it looks like we're going to be short this year in our budget. Our, our, did you want to say where our expenses will exceed our, it's our into income? But at this point in time, we are sitting on so much cash that we do not need to undesignate any funds at this point until we actually need to spend the money. Or another way of putting it until, or until our cash gets so low that at that point in time, we undesignate funds. So, so, um, you either, you either worry about, the big worry for an organization is running out of cash. We have lots of cash, as we all know. And, and so we do not need to tackle this idea of undesignating certain funds today to do that. For example, at the end of this year, uh, we're going to be in the hole on paper, $150,000. Well, in reality, that doesn't mean anything to anybody as far as making payments to people, covering payroll, uh, paying our vendors for gas and electric or anything like that. So, so at this point in time, we do not need to tackle the undesignedated fund idea. I don't know if that explains it well enough or not, but, but that's what we've kind of agreed upon in the finance committee.
And then secondarily, on paper, the money that came in for the state for the construction grant, right? It shows on our profit and loss as revenue that.
As revenue.
Right. And that, when we haven't spent it yet. So.
Right.
That, so I don't, I don't think we're going to show a loss at the end of 2020 because that money came in.
Will offset that.
Yeah.
Correct, correct, correct. I mean, we, our accounting system could get really a lot more complicated than, than it needs to be. Um, but, but we are, if we were, we were, we are audited. That's certainly, I'm not saying if we're, we're audited, but I'm saying if we, if we were uh, under the microscope from the state, let's say, or some other big group, then maybe we might have to make our accounting system more complicated is the word I use. But, but, but for us, w- we are okay not tackling this undesignedated idea at this point in time.
Okay.
And, and that, and Joe, that would be okay with the auditors or we don't?
Yes, yes, yes. The auditors, the auditors audit our financial statements. And we can show a loss and, and, or, or show a gain and we can, we can show them where we got that from. And as long as they can, they, you know, they can follow the path and everything, then, then they are, they are auditing that, that what we are telling them is true. And we're going to tell them, I don't know what we're going to tell them. You know, for. But whatever it is, it'll be in black, it, it won't be a fairy tale. It'll be in black and white and, 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 you know, and, and they could, they can audit and say, say that, that the statements are true and fair, you know, so.
Right.
That's all, yeah. Now, now if some group wants to come in and say, you're doing it all wrong, well, let's let them say that to us until, but until that time, we don't, we don't need to. Typically, the hospital, for example, I, I use them as, because I'm very knowledgeable, the hospital. And one year, we will show a loss of $6 million. And the next year will show a gain of $2 million. And it's, it's all on paper. The hospital doesn't start to worry until our level of cash gets so low that we can't make payroll, that we can't pay, uh, for, for, you know, our pharmacy beds that we, so that's, that's when, that's when the, the board, for example, the hospital would say, well, let's ask the foundation for money or whatever it is we have to do. So.
Thank you, Joe.
You're welcome.
Okay. Then we can, we can then, we can then move on and when we need to, we'll tackle that issue if and when we need to.
We can table that for now. Yep.
Okay, good. Okay. Uh, Lisa, did you have, uh, some comments on the closing and reopening due to the pandemic? Are we go, we're going through this spreadsheet that you had put together?
Right. I presented that to the executive.
Exec committee met and, um, and had some comments and we talked about this, uh, was it last week?
Yep.
Yeah. I could confuse this to where we are, what date this is.
Me too.
I think it was a week ago.
Yeah.
When we met.
Okay. All right.
Um, one of the reasons I brought this to the executive committee and to the full board is because it's really the board's decision to close the library, well, to close our building. I mean, obviously the recommendation that would come from me have to do with staffing or not having heat. But, um, in terms of what's happening right now with a pandemic, it really is a board decision. The board can designate or authorize me to make it, but I thought, make those decisions. But I thought it would be really helpful if I outlined this framework, right? That we would shift levels of service based on certain conditions. Um, one thing that I brought to the executive committee was there was some discussion with department heads here that maybe we should be using some kind of a different metric rather than the yellow, orange, red zones that are dictated by the state. And the executive committee said, um, that they, they, everybody was in agreement that it, it feels like it's good enough to use the state levels, um, which now will incorporate hospital capacity as part of how those um, yellow, red and, or, uh, red, orange zones are, are calculated. Um, I think it's a little challenging because you could look at the rolling, you could look at the average or the, the amount of the, what is it called? The positivity rate for today. And in Monroe County, it's 10.4%. But that's for today. And the state, in order to declare a yellow or red, orange, red, looks at a seven day rolling average. And so it kind of evens out those, you know, big.
Spikes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, so that's, that's really it. Um, I didn't know if anybody had any questions about it. Um, it's, we can't, Larry made a great point at the meeting last week, you know, I, I can't predict every single thing that could happen and try to come up with it. But I, you know, I wanted to come up with, like I said, a loose framework that would help me make decisions. And then is that okay with you to tell me? Yes, of course. If it's, you know, yellow zone, you're going to do this and we're fine with that.
Yes, I had a question. It's not to do really with that, but what's PIC stand for?
Oh, person in charge.
Person in charge. Okay.
Sorry.
Thank you.
We kept going back and forth with the word team leader. That didn't stick. It kept, people keep saying PIC.
Okay.
And in, in, in architecture, we use the term AHJ. That's the authority having jurisdiction. So. Not the same, not the same. Person in charge is good. So, I, I mean, I think it's a really good framework. It does spell out the what if then, uh, kind of scenarios. And, you know, it's always going to be, uh, we're, we're going to do our best. But I did feel that we should, uh, tie it to, to the state or, or local health departments and just follow their lead. It just seems like that makes it less complicated, makes it more of a, makes it easier to make decisions. And also I think makes it easier to explain it to the public after saying, well, why are you doing this? Well, it's because we're in a yellow zone and not because we just felt like it, because we were scared or something. So, uh, or, or the other way, you know, we're not go, we're going without masks because everybody's getting, um, their, their shots. Right? So, so I think it makes a lot of sense to stick with the, the red, um, the red or, or yellow, orange, red. And I think also we do need to recognize that things may change in the future. So as the board adopts this plan as a, um, as a framework within which, uh, Lisa can, and we as a board also would need and this plan comes around and, and I, I, I think it's a good start and a good, good thing to be working from at least at this point.
So if we're going with state guidelines, does Lisa have to ask the board for permission to close or can she just close? Cause she's going with state guidelines. It doesn't seem like it's even a choice.
I think. No, but I, I think, well, the decision is, is, well, you go ahead and answer, Lisa. I, I'm, I'm thinking that, that, um, the state guidelines will dictate that. And then, and then this, this, or dictate what level of service, but the, I'm sorry, will dictate whether or not you can stay open or closed. But this framework dictates your level of service based on the condition.
Gotcha.
Is, is that right, Lisa, or do you?
Yes.
Am I?
Yeah.
Yep. And so the, the only, the only real, the state guidelines just say that you can't have, you know, in a yellow zone, you can't have more than the maximum capacity of 25 people. And so this takes it a step further to say, well, if we can only have 25 people in the building, well, and that includes staff, well, that, what does that mean? So how do we, how do we react to the state saying you're in a yellow zone? Um, and how, if it's a red zone, only essential workers can be in the building. And it, that, back in March, April, May, um, the library was not considered essential. So I, we would not have any, we'd be completely virtual. So I, I think the framework takes into account those pieces of the guidelines and says, this is how it actually would work out. And it, and it gives me that the board can grant me the authority to carry out that, that framework.
Yes.
Plus, the decisions you make ultimately affect your staff directly. And it's good to know that for you, that you have the board's support and decisions that are difficult, because this is really not easy for anybody. So.
No, it's not.
It's really not.
It is not.
And then throw in no heat.
I looked at Jill at, in her little hat with her mittens and, and, um, I'm like, maybe we should close early. And she's like, she's looking at me like, you think? Okay, yes, yes, we will. We'll close early.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Good.
Yeah, but you don't, you don't need a, you don't need a spreadsheet to tell you whether to do that or not. If you don't have heat, you're gonna close.
Just common sense.
There's no decision matrix here. It just goes.
No, I, I think with the pandemic, there are fines involved.
Oh.
And if I, um, if the board doesn't grant me authority, then the fines can come on me. So it's, it needs to be at the board level.
That would be good.
Yeah.
So, so we'll need a motion. I mean, I don't want to, um, yeah, I, I think what we do is we, we, we need a motion to accept this, uh, as, as presented and grant, um, Lisa the authority to act within this framework.
So move.
Okay.
It's Ginny.
Second.
Yeah.
Okay. So, um, I mean, we can continue the discussion. I just wanted to get the motion on the table. So, so, uh, I am not, I'm trying to cut anybody short. So if there, but you know, are there other, your cats come to join us here? Does?
Go on, go on. Sorry.
Hungry? Maybe it's dinner time?
It's a young cat. It's, it's actually my husband's cat. It doesn't like me. That's why it's doing this.
Okay. All right. Any further discussion then on, on the plan? Lisa, I think you did, you and, and your, your folks at the library, you know, you worked with to, to, um, put this together. I think did a really good job with it. So appreciate the effort. And, uh, I think moving forward, you know, is like, again, as I said, we'll look to, um, make amendments to this plan as necessary. So, um, all, all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. On the agenda, we have discussion items. So next, uh, discussion item is meeting dates and times for 2021.
I, I just wanted to put it out, I just wanted to put it out there. Um, right now we're meeting on the, well, typically not today, on the fourth Tuesday at four o'clock or 4:30, four o'clock. Um, I don't know. Um, I thought Linda was going to be here. So, but I think she's okay with us meeting on, at this time. But Ginny, I didn't know if we need.
No, I'm good. I'm good.
You're good? Okay.
Yep.
So I just wanted to make sure that those. That we're going to stick with that time and I will send out a list of all the dates. And I'll, I'll, I'll probably set back the ones that are in the holiday week, you know, like we're in December usually. Um, and I'll send that out to you and because of open meeting law. Um, we can look at it in January, but as long as I, I can publish the January meeting and then, um, in January, after January, I could send the whole list of all the meetings to the citizen. If anybody. Yeah. If anybody has any other questions or, or thoughts about changing the meeting, just let me know.
Okay. Okay. Favorite topics is last, save the best for last then. Is our, is our, um, our roof project. Nancy and I had a, I thought a very productive meeting. Um, and we resolved to take this issue up with our respective boards. In order to come up with one or two or three scenarios that we felt we could, we could live with in terms of how to finance the project. Uh, again, is that, that the timing of the project is such that it, it's not, um, being held up by anything other than, you know, coming up with a way to finance the project. And we, we also can't go out and try to raise funds locally unless we have that picture in our minds. There's been a number of, uh, ideas that have been floated over the past, wow, what, year, two years now? Um, so we, Nancy and I agreed that we would both take it to our, to a subcommittee or members of our respective boards. Um, determine what our priorities would be, you know, not, not only just to identify a scenario for funding, but also to prioritize them. And, um, so during our executive committee last week, we, we met and we discussed, um, three or four ideas. And essentially came up with the two that were listed in the, um, in the meeting notes that I, that I sent out. Um, the first being that the foundation authorized financing of the entire project, borrow the money for whatever the period, uh, 10 years, 15 years. Um, but that would be in lieu of any contribution to operating, uh, expenses to the, um, to, to the library. Um, and the other scenario would be to, um, contribute a portion of the done money in some ratio. We decided two to one at that point. Thinking that perhaps it could be a third, a third, a third if the, um, if, if tax credits or grants or local funding would be available. Or that we could split whatever money that would be in some equitable form. The idea for coming up with both of these scenarios, and this is as far as we decided to go as the executive committee, was so that we could take this, these two ideas and, uh, meet with members of the foundation board with their ideas. And then collectively come up, come up with a solution that would be mutually acceptable. And then we would bring that solution back to the board for approval. And then we would bring that solution back to the board for um approval. So that's where we stand. Um, the best time to do the roof would be, of course, as soon as possible. So the, you know, one scenario would be to have the architect begin the begin the document uh documentation, the rest of the design and documentation, have beds ready so that we could start construction sometime in the early summer. Um, if we miss that window, uh, in other words, they would prepare the document, say, from January to February to March. If we miss that window, we likely wouldn't have an opportunity to do this again until sometime in twenty two. So I think that's pretty much Nancy, any other thoughts that?
You know, no, um, I would I would second what Larry um just reported and said, it was a good conversation. I'm glad we had it, Larry. I reached out to our I felt that on our board, it would it should be our finance committee that took this up. And um they are not meeting, they're meeting Friday, this coming Friday. So I don't have anything else to report at this point. Um, I guess I would ask uh whether or not you wanted me to um share with them the two ideas that you have come up with at this point, or you want to wait and see what they?
I'd sort of like to wait to see how they they, because I wouldn't want to sway. Uh, because I I'm I would be afraid that they would then just react to our proposals versus.
For sure.
There's, yeah, and so maybe there's a third or fourth idea that should be, you know, uh discussed with your board so that it could be um. So then we could come together. I mean, the plan was to do this in December, come together in January and then sort of compare notes. So, you know, you have so then then I would say share this with each other prior to a meeting at each, you know, respective committee. Share it um prior to a meeting sometime in January and see if we can't get can't get off a dime here.
Right, right.
That would be my thinking anyway. I don't know. Um, anybody else that was in the meeting or anybody on the board have another thought about that?
Um, I just.
Oh, go ahead.
One thing I've noticed, and I think you've said this before, that we're not, this is being treated separate from the ownership issue.
Yes.
So we're gonna fix the roof and not talk about who owns the building or try to work that into the schedule or have it affected in any way. Right? I mean, this it's like they stand alone. These don't look like they're dependent on.
Yeah, I think I, well, I think there, yeah. Again, that's the question that continually comes up. It's hard to answer. Um, first of all, we have made no headway on hiring a legal counsel for this. Um, and um I think that there are members of the board who are probably not going to want to move forward at all until we have that um advice and help. So we're we're a little stuck with that. That's our problem, not yours. Um, I think the ownership might come into um be an issue. For instance, applying for Larry and Lisa, you can correct me here, applying for historic uh or tax credits, we the foundation, I believe, would have to be the owner of the building, right?
Right, right. So that goes, yeah, and that goes back to the fundraising piece.
Right, yeah. So there are Jenny, to respond to you, there are I think we do have to think about that a little bit. I um I don't want it to hold up everything.
Um, the other question I had was that um recommend, so um, having the foundation withhold contributions to the operating budget for the term of the loan um kind of implies that they would otherwise be giving us operating, you know, contributions to the operating budget. And I didn't think we were getting them anymore. I didn't maybe I'm missing something or I'm just under the date.
I think.
If they're not giving them to us, then what are they holding? Really, they could just not give them to us anyway, so.
Right, that 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 withholding would just continue, I guess.
All right, yeah, okay, that makes sense.
But they didn't formally pass a resolution saying they were never gonna give us money again. Am I right, Nancy?
No.
They did say for two years.
Right.
And that's at least two years ago. Am I right? But they didn't formally. Formally say. They didn't formally say they would never give us that money again.
No, no, no.
For year to year.
I think so. I think I think, yeah, I think a lot of that right now is gonna be tied up in what we decide to do.
Sure.
How we decide to work out the funding.
I'm, okay. Oh, these look like two really good ideas, I have to say. They really do.
But am I wrong, Jenny and Larry, you were there, Russ, you were there? Um, that we kind of favored number one over two, or am I wrong on that?
Yeah, priority one was was for the foundation to run the whole thing.
Right.
They, the second one was um was that was an alternative. We we talked about it third, but I I we just decided not to even go that far. Um, I do believe that, you know, roof roof project aside, if there were no roof project in need, I believe the foundation agreed that they would pause for two years because they feel that they over contributed and they wanted to um kind of uh reef uh.
Reset.
Yeah.
Reset.
Reset or.
Right.
Yeah, increase the endowment by whatever and then and then they would resume. So yeah, the notion that they would not resume ever, I don't think is on the table.
No, I don't. No, I don't think that was ever the intent.
Right, right, right. So anyway, I think there's a lot still to be discussed. Um, our hope was that we would get this conversation going at least and try to come to some resolution in January. If we can't, we'll keep working at it. But I think that was at least our target, that we would meet in December. And then we would try to come to some and we would have a meeting in January with the hopes of of arriving at a solution. So that we're not just bouncing around ideas, but that, okay, we can both live with this one this, you know, defined scenario and then we and then we go and and we we try, we get our funding. One, um, Lisa, I had one question too. Did you get the um um, did you get a proposal from Bell and Spina?
Yeah, no, I did not. I left a message. I think I can't remember if I did it yesterday or today.
Okay. So any any other comments or thoughts or questions about this?
I just I had, um, I think they are both good proposals, but I was I was wondering under number one, we're see looking at possibly the full cost of the project offset by potential support from local foundations. I don't, I wondered if you ever run across issues with trying to get local support from other foundations? If they if they're knowing that there is a library foundation with over three million dollars, is that a stumbling block in the pipeline, you can still get funding?
Um, from.
Has it been asked before? I don't even know.
It's a good question. I never thought about it.
Yes, it is.
Passed the um the Emerson Foundation was a a big contributor to the Library Foundation.
To the foundation, interesting.
Right, so so that that endowment um that I, you know, was a big um were were some big contributions. Um, I think that Fred Emerson might have been on the board back with Mr. Erskine. Um, I know that maybe had a lot to do with the original nineteen seventy two addition. Um, so and I think the Colombian Foundation and the French and Metcalf Foundations have been very supportive. And um Walter certainly from French and Metcalf knows that we have the the Library Foundation. So I haven't I haven't experienced it, but um I I think that that's a a really important point to think about.
But yeah, but in a way, it's no different than other organizations, Meg. The hospital, for for example, has a foundation. Um, the Y used to, but it's that's been absorbed, but so I think the foundations are are more apt to look at what the project is. Um, and what they're doing, understanding why we have an endowment.
Yeah.
Um, I mean, I I hope.
Yeah.
That that would.
That's good. I wasn't sure and I don't have a lot of history with it, so.
Well, the good question.
The College Foundation.
And the college.
Well, that serves as a a way for the college to receive money from including large founda- other foundations. So, you know, they give us sixty thousand dollars for a long term scholarship for a certain program. So it's sort of like a pass through, although I know that's not the word they like to use now, but so the foundation is like a way to give money to an organization, so. But we happen to have money. They don't all have a lot of money, so.
Good, right. That was the only question I had.
Yeah, a good one.
No, that's a good point.
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, anybody else?
So just down the road a little bit, with if the finance committee uh for the foundation doesn't make any kind of a recommendation or comes any kind of a decision comes January, what should be our course? Do we make our proposal or do we just sit and wait for them to move now?
Well, I I would hope, Russ, um, as I requested them to do is that they come up with, um, just as you did, um, your executive committee did and Larry and I had agreed um, two or three, I'm they're probably come up, I would say, two um ideas. Um, I I think they should be able to do that.
I would hope so.
So um if they don't, um what can I do?
Fire him and get a new committee.
I think it's a good good kind of good good point also, um, but I'm hoping that we're all working in good faith here.
Yeah, yeah.
And comes of the meeting that you're having on Friday.
Right, right. I mean, they've already asked a couple of questions, you know, that I felt had already been answered at one time or another. So um, so we've been writing back and forth. Lisa, you've been part of um that that communication. I've asked uh, I think one thing that was really important was the whole the timeline. Um, which Larry really helped me to understand. Um, so I I gave that to them if we were to look at next year and um, asked Lisa if she could fill in some deadlines for grants that we might be applying for, just so they'll have all that information um when they meet. And a couple of other things, but we'll we'll work through it. So so hopefully, Russ, we we will have something.
I hope so, yeah.
Yeah, we do. We all do.
Yeah, really.
Yeah.
Okay. Any anything else, any anything um to do with the roof or anything to not do with the roof? Anything else we need to talk about?
Well, I want to just mention that on um in our next meeting, um, we will be talking about committees for twenty twenty one and and Russ and Meg, I think this falls in our category. So for the meeting, um, we'll send you um, the current list and the current committees and you can think about uh if you want to continue to serve on a committee that you're on or if you want to move to another one. Um, and we'll think about whether we need to recruit people from the community to um, fill certain committees. So something to think about on the other side of the holidays, that we'll be gearing up for that. Um, and I don't know, I don't know, maybe Lisa was going to do this, but I just wanted to, is Jim still here? I can only look at four of you at a time here. Where is he? Yeah, so I just want I wanted to thank you, Jim, so much for your service and really appreciate it. I know you're gonna still stay involved, but we're gonna miss you and just really appreciate your commitment to the library.
Oh, it's my pleasure uh to serve. I've always used the library and and believed it, spoken for it, uh sold it to the community. So it's a pleasure to serve and I appreciate working with all you wonderful people and those that have gotten off like Pat Messina and and those others led before. So thank you very much. It was my privilege.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
And thank you for considering to stay on the finance with us. We need your expertise.
I appreciate that.
Really do.
Do you have anything else on my list? Others?
Anybody else? Okay. Well, then, um, so our next meeting is, uh, oh, do we have a, do we have an actual date? We know it's the fourth.
January twenty sixth.
Yeah.
Okay.
January twenty sixth? I have, um, okay, January twenty sixth.
Yeah.
Okay, um, I'm just looking for it on my, oh, there it is, yes, at four o'clock. All right, very good. Well, everybody enjoy enjoy your uh Christmas and New Year holidays. Be safe.
Yes.
Be happy, enjoy enjoy your family from a distance.